We'll put it right here and then I'll be like.
Scott.
Yes, sir.
Give us the verdict.
Sure.
And do you have a pledge?
I just always. Myself.
Oh. Yeah, that's fine. I'd I.
As as a strange, I don't know why.
I was, I was, I always thought, oh, I talk so much.
So you're staying cool?
Anybody.
Uh huh.
Who?
No, no, no.
It's been, yeah, unfortunately, you can't let a little bit of heat stop you, so you have to get out there. You know, it's like go out and work for an hour and come in and cool down for my heart.
It doesn't matter. I just always just signed it out because I thought.
Everything's burning out.
But it doesn't matter. You can do it however you want.
But it'll pass.
This too, yep.
Mike, would you like us to start or should we wait for Mike?
Right, I should go ahead and start. He's sometimes late.
Would like to welcome everyone to our planning commission meeting today, June twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. We will begin today with an invite. The opening prayer by Commissioner Thompson, and then I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Our dear heavenly fathers, we come before you this beautiful day. We're so grateful for our many blessings. We're so thankful to be here in the city of Linden and for this. As as such a great, beautiful place to live and raise our families. We ask now that we started, start this planning commission meeting, we ask thy spirit may be with us, that we may make choices that for the best of the city and the residents. And we're so grateful for our many blessings, especially the opportunity to live in this country. We ask those to protect those at this time, military, police, fire, first responders who protect our freedoms each day. Keep, protect them and keep them from harm. We say his things in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand. Repeat the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin our meeting tonight with an audible roll call of the commissioners. Rob Callis.
Here.
Steve Johnson.
Here.
Scott Thompson.
Here.
Jared Showers.
Here.
Karen Danielson is excused. Sharon Call.
Here.
And Mike Marchbanks.
Here.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our meeting on June eleventh. The commissioners have received these beforehand and have had a time to review them. Are there any corrections or additions that need to be made to those minutes?
I didn't see any.
The worst ones, I believe, are correct.
Yeah, so.
Yep, there they are. Okay.
I make a motion to approve as it as printed.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes stand approved. The next item on our agenda is a time for public comment. This is a time for any, any public that come that can address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda. Is there anybody here for that purpose? Not seeing any. We'll move on to our next item. Our next item, item number four. This is a continuation of the meet of the recommendation to the Linden City Council to amend the Linden City general plan. Future land use map from commercial gateway to mixed commercial. And is staff going to present on all three of these at once, or?
Yes.
So, item four, five, and six will all be presented together.
Thank you, commissioners. Just wanted to give a quick overview from our last meeting. The applicant, Jason Brown, Jason, if you want to come up as well, if you, if you can add any items. The applicant is proposing an approximately eighty-eight thousand square foot sports facility that will be located on seven hundred north and about thirteen hundred west. The, the current proposal would be that fifty percent of the facility would be for the sporting, sports training and tournaments. The other fifty percent would act as warehouse use and in the hopes that the, this will be very successful, which we want it to be. And then that will, the sports facility will move into the warehouse incrementally and take over that space. So, couple items why we're here tonight. And so the, the current zoning of the property is Linden Village Commercial. The applicant is proposing that the back portion be, be rezoned to mixed commercial. And then also a one hundred foot frontage area along seven hundred north because the mixed commercial zone requires a one hundred feet of frontage. That's why you see that flag lot shape. The other reason why we're here is to amend the general plan. The men, the general plan has this area as designated as a commercial gateway. And it's that area in the brown up here. And the proposal again would be to, to change that to mixed commercial a- as well. You've got the seven hundred north master plan there on the, on the right. It has this as kind of a TOD core area. I don't think we, we're not amending the gen, the seven hundred north master plan. We're, we're just amending the general plan as part of this application. And then the third item is also the planning commission needs to make a recommendation on a development agreement. And I'll go in more detail on those items here in just a few minutes. So, I, we provided you in your staff report renderings of the, of the proposed building. The, this is what the, these are the architectural standards of the mixed commercial zone. It says, all structures in the, the mixed commercial zone shall be aesthetically pleasing, well proportioned buildings that blend with the surrounding property and structures. All structures in the mixed commercial zone have finishes of brick, decorative block, decorative blocks, stucco wood, concrete tilt up, or other materials and designs approved within the Linden City Commercial Design Standards or as otherwise approved by the planning commission. And so that allows you to re, to consider the commercial design standards with the building exteriors, but also allows you to review other items that are, that are brought before you. So, these are the renderings that were sent out. I sent these out to you today as an update. The, the previous ones just had a blank area where the, on these gray end caps. Sorry, my mouse is showing up. So, the, the previous one I sent you didn't have any windows here. That was one in the staff report. The applicant's now proposing windows in these end cap areas. The, the materials is, would be a metal, architectural metal panel. So, you, you can see. There's two different types here. It's a little hard to see, but you've got one type of architectural metal panel and then a second metal panel that will go on the, the end, in those gray end cap areas. So, in my staff report, I, I tried to explain, you know, how are we, because I, I think it's important to still try to meet the commercial design standards. Specifically regarding orientation of the building, the, the roof line. I, I think the applicant does, has done a really good job on the roof line, how it changes, how you've got flat and slightly sloped roofs, roof lines in, on this building. You have, the, the entry is prominent. You've, you've got a canopy over it. You've got columns. You've got a lot of glass on that entryway. There's a couple other items. You know, those were the same, those, those were the main items. I, I think that, you know, are in compliance with that. Things that you, you need to also look at. Sixty percent fenestration is on the ground floor is what the, the building or the commercial design standards requires. I came up with more than what the arch, architect did. I can't even think. I came up with forty-two percent. And then adding these other windows, I think you've got more fenestration along that building.
What percent does that bring it to?
I, I didn't have time to check it. The, the architect said twenty-six percent, but that looks a lot more than twenty-six percent. I think you're probably, with, with those windows on the ends now, I, I bet you're more up around fifty percent, something like that or more.
Does that include the ones on the, the very end? You know, you've got the one, the four in the front and then on the sides?
Yeah, it includes everything. Yeah, it doesn't include these. We don't count those in our commercial design standards, just along the front facade. Secondary materials, that, that's something the, the commercial design standards really promote. And then a four-sided architecture and, and so, you, but, but again, I think that's kind of that balance on, on this, what you should look at. The commercial design standards and then also the, the ordinance also allows you to accept other materials. Now, these will be in the development agreement, so this goes before you. You make a recommendation to the council. The council adopts it when it comes back. Then this is what you'd be bound to, this design and, and materials and, and things when it comes back to you. So. So, there's a lot to think about with, with the commercial design standards, the mixed commercial zone, and, and then what can also be reviewed by you. Couple other renderings here. As you can see, this is, this is the previous rendering, rendering you had in your staff report on this one. Any questions on design standards before we move into the development agreement?
Just to make sure I'm clear on that. The design standards are mixed commercial design standards we're going against, or is it the Linden Village design standards?
So, so the Linden Village goes, it says that you follow the commercial design standards. And so it's really up, up to you with the, if, if you're adopting this, recommending approval of this mixed commercial zone, you can, you've got some choices here. You can go fully with the commercial design standards. Or that last line in this mixed commercial zone says, or as otherwise approved by the planning commission.
So I guess my question there is how would this stack up to? If it was being built, let's, so we weren't doing warehouse. They were just going to do a sporting complex, so it meets the Linden zone, right? It could be in the. How would this compare to those standards?
Re, really, you're, you're probably just looking at a second material, maybe a little bit more trim on the corners or, or something like that, but, but.
It's close, but there's just, okay.
It's close, yeah. It's, it's really comes down to if you like the architectural metal on, on there compared to. Because it, it calls out architectural metal as a secondary material, not a primary material.
Okay.
So that, that's, that's the main thing. If you're not, if you're just considering the building, not the use.
Right.
So.
So then this is all metal? There, none of those black panels on the front are stucco or?
No.
Okay, and then I noticed on the flat portions, of course, there's no parapet. What about AC units? Are we gonna get this all done and see a bunch of big old AC units sitting up there?
That, that's a good question for Jason. I'm not sure.
No. No. I definitely don't want to build that and then have it look ugly, for sure. So, no. Won't be, we will not have any AC units visible, for sure.
Or will they be behind the building or something?
Yeah, I mean.
Jason, let me have you move that microphone.
It would be kind of a shame to build that and then make it look like it belongs somewhere. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, usually, you know, flat roofs have a parapet to hide that kind of stuff, so I noticed this didn't.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. All it's, yeah, it wouldn't be, definitely would not be visible. Then it can kind of completely destroys the aesthetic of it, you know?
And that might be something you want to include in the agreement, you know, that you don't see them from the public right away on the roof or?
Yeah.
I think if we had the language, I'll, I'll grab this mic for Brittany's sake. I think if we have in the language something that just says it, it won't be seen. In other words, if his engineers come in and say, hey, we need to put it on a roof, but we're going to design it so it, it matches and it can't be seen, you're going to put some type of a, a screening in front of it to, to fit the building. I think if we just have that language saying it won't be seen from the public right away, I think that should be sufficient.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
My, my design gag would better have to ask.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm good.
Well, I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand and I'm looking for it in the notes again. So because we're changing this to a, a mixed commercial use. Then. And I'm looking for it as far as the standards for, if this was strictly commercial. Then we would require at least, you know, how much of the primary building material?
At least sixty percent.
Uh huh. But because we're rezoning it as a mix or proposing to rezonate as mixed commercial. Then I'm trying to find it in the notes again because I studied through those pretty careful, but how much of that needs to be that primary building material? How much needs to be the secondary?
And I, I didn't get into that in the staff report because the applicant's proposing something different. But, but if you were to use just the commercial design standards, it would require sixty percent of that decorative block, brick.
Right.
Stone.
But because we're cha, we're proposing to change the zone on it. Then we can make decisions otherwise?
Yes, you can agree, you know, with the applicant on what, what, what it should be, if, should be different otherwise. So what, what we're saying in the development agreement is if you like this design that the applicant's proposing, then we will adopt this rendering right here as part of the development agreement. And then that's what, those are the materials down here at the bottom that he'll need to put.
Okay, I looked at the building. It, it's a, it's a really nice building. I'm just wanting to make sure that we aren't compromising any standards that we set up for ourselves on that seven hundred north commercial gateway. That's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I think I likewise look at it with solid aluminum. I look at the front of it. I think it would, it would look great if we had like a four foot, you know, brick coming up from the ground, but then if you look all the windows, that's really not much brick. That's only on the, on the outside wings because everything else is pretty much window. So that wouldn't be much of an ask to try to tie it in.
To answer your question, I think when we looked at this and studying other facilities out there, we wanted something that was really eye catching, modern. You know, so when you start mixing in with, with mo, a modern architecture, you start mixing a bunch of different elements. It kind of takes away from, from what you're trying to do with that.
Yeah, just for me, the lower right picture, the wide panels looks very industrial to me. But then the other panels look great. Those, the other ones that are a little bit closer together, more architectural in design, those look better to me personally.
Let me show you what, I, there's a new sports facility in Mapleton that has those wide panels. Show you what they look like. That's kind of what the one in Mapleton looks like with those. I think those are metal, if I remember.
They have a lot of contrasting stone on that too, don't you?
Yeah, and that's why I take that lower portion being stone and then to those panels, to me has a good, this looks good. I'm just concerned about those panels going straight to the ground. It's going to end up looking like a barn.
And this one's supposed to look like.
To me, this looks more like a barn.
Yeah.
Oh, really? Okay.
To me, this looks more like a barn than, than Mapleton.
That's what I called the barn.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And that too, huh?
Here's, let me show you a couple others.
That, that one is like a fifth about of the money this one was going to cost.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed. Don't get me wrong. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm just expressing, expressing my, expressing my, you know, why, like that. I really like that.
So this, this is the, the front climbing gym in Salt Lake. They've got two o, two facilities up there that.
I mean, we could keep that same one and just do a different color. Does that make sense? If that.
What color are you thinking?
Well, on the, on the rendering, it's black and gray, like a charcoal or a gray. So if that's the texture you like better, we could just switch, switch, switch up the colors.
I wouldn't change it just because of me, but I'm just expressing my opinion.
Hey, Scott, your opinion matters, bro.
You know, I'm, I'm just expressing my opinion, you know.
I think we're thinking that this may not quite meet what our standards are because of the brick or the block. But I think if you true, through block or brick, like as in a Wayne's coating, it would almost, on this building, it'd almost look like we're forcing it. It doesn't meet.
That's, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Tail wagging the dog.
The, the modern look would be kind of destroyed.
Yeah. I'm more concerned, I would rather forego that and get some kind of an agreement that nothing goes on the roof because the roof is a really important part of this building.
Yep.
And I think also, if you had more of a, you know, instead of an industrial lighting, you had more of a, a modern type lighting on the front facade too, that
Yeah.
that, that might look well, or that, that might look really goo, well as well.
I think it looks really good. I, when you, when you think of these type of facilities around and whatnot, like even Sandy Expo Center and stuff like this. This is a good looking, very good looking sport facility and, and, you know, and that's, that's what it, what it is. I, I like it.
I'm not saying I don't like it. I just want to make sure that we're not setting a standard that we have to adhere to for other applicants.
Yeah.
Not, because I, I do think it looks very nice, but that's my concern is I don't want to have someone else come in and say, well, you know, you.
Pretty slippery slope.
Yeah, you allowed all of this on this other building.
If someone did come in and talk to me about that and have, and have that request, what I would say is this was done by a development agreement and we also changed the zoning on the property. So it's, it's two different.
And that's why I brought that up first, is we are changing it to a mixed commercial.
Yeah.
So that make, that makes a big difference. And I don't think that we would change any other commercial properties along seven hundred north
No.
to a mixed commercial because there's some unique situations with this property.
I agree.
So, I, I don't know.
With the, with the transfer station behind it.
I didn't even know about that till last time. I wasn't really pumped to hear about a waste management station behind it, but that's all right.
Yeah. That, that was one reason I.
That's a random place to be putting that.
Yeah.
Well, it's already there.
Yeah.
That was one reason I asked if you were thinking about any kind of a, a
Yeah.
concrete wall, you know, solid surface fencing or anything like that behind it.
Well, the good thing is the, the whole building will block out. You would never even know it's back there.
That's right. That's right.
So.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, the way you're, if I understand the way you're planning to divide it, you know, and kind of right down the middle, two, is it two courts or?
That's just kind of how it lays out.
Four courts and four courts, right?
Four courts, yeah. So it'll be four high school courts and eight volleyball courts and then.
So you're going to put a wall up or something right at the highest point of this building?
Yeah, for the time being.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just a question is, does that give you enough density for sports to attract the kind of thing you're hoping to attract, or is it going to be a little bit smaller?
So there's not a bigger one around. Yeah, so I think we can, it, it'll give us a good gauge of, you know, where we're at and what we can pull in and.
Easy to expand.
Yeah, easy to expand. Well, especially with my partner, because he's, like I said, he is what does he have, like seven hundred thousand feet of warehouse already in Vineyard? So he's very easily just renting.
But what will you do? Kind of sign short-term leases with your warehouse?
My partner, so he can just kind of.
Oh, he's the one that's going to be.
Yeah, he's the one. So as we go, he'll just kind of incrementally move out and.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
With dividing it in half, do you see a pro, I mean, I just look at the rendering, you know, and you have this beautiful front, right? You're going to come in and.
Yeah, you're going to have to have kind of like a foyer area first and that's little attached.
And then go one way.
Yeah, we kind of, so yeah, you can't split it like right to the front door, right?
Yeah, that is, you'd ruin that beautiful front with the, with the wall in the middle.
Yeah, so. Yeah, you'd have to kind of have like a foyer area then break it up inside.
Uh, any other questions before we move on to the agreement, I'm guessing, next?
With just the structure or?
Okay, I think we're ready to go on to the development agreement.
Um, so there's about seven or eight different requirements that we're agreeing to with the city and, and Jason on this. And I, I just wanted to go through each one of those. So, first one, the building will be constructed with, with the design and materials as shown in, in exhibit D. And so that would be the renderings that we just saw. To maintain consistency with the design of se, of the seven hundred north corridor and the vision of the Linden City General Plan and seven hundred north small area plan, site will be designed to meet the Linden Village site requirements as, as found in seventeen dot forty-eight zero two five Linden City Land Development Policy Standards and Specifications and Drawings and the commercial design standards. So the site will still meet those standards that any other building along that corridor would be. So that's your landscape standards there. And, and your.
That, that site plan, basically.
Yes, yep. So this is the paragraph we've been working on today. So, no more than fifty percent of the building will be used as a warehouse in conjunction with the sports training and tur, tournament use. Next, the developer agrees to, to use good faith and econom, and commercial reasonably efforts, reasonably efforts to ensure that the sports training and tournament use business is successful. However, in the event that the sports training and tournament use is terminated because it's non, not profitable to the developer, the developer do, agrees to develop the sports training and tournament space into a minimum of three storefront units that allow for office or retail space located at the primary entrance of the unit facing seven hundred north. The remainder of the building space will allow uses per the mixed commercial zone as found in the Linden City Standard Land Use Table with the exceptions below. And so we've listed some exceptions of what uses we don't want allowed in there. And then this says, you know, redevelopment of the building shall be approved by the Linden City Planning Commission as a, as an amended site plan. So if this does terminate the sports use, they want to redo, repurpose the building, it's got to come back to you for, for review. It says, and shall approve the changes if they're consistent with this agreement. So we went through the standard land use table and the Linden Village Zone and came up with some, what uses were prohibited in the, in the Linden Village Zone. Brought most of those over and then what uses kind of conflicted a little bit in the standard land use table between a commercial zone and the, and a mixed commercial zone. And so mainly no outdoor storage, specific types of manufacturing, no used vehicle lots, auto, no auto lube and tire repair. And then these, these, like, like equipment rental and leasing is prohibited in the Linden Village Zone. We brought that over. No assisted living, manufactured homes, smoke shops, disinfecting and exterminating, landscape services, peat extraction. That's kind of interesting, but that was a, that was an allowed use in the, in the general, or in the mixed commercial zone, but prohibited in the Linden Village Zone. So I'm like, we, we need to have that in there.
I told Mike, tattoo shop probably wouldn't be good, but he, we fought back and forth.
We fought back.
Good job, Mike.
So, any, any questions on that set, on that section?
My only question is on the, hopefully we never get, see it, but if it does, has to be redeveloped. If it's, if it's failed, right, the, the cost of redeveloping it is going to be in question, I guess. How's that going to happen? Right now, so the, the sports complex has failed. I'm guessing the warehouse would just continue. Is there anything to say, well, in order for the warehouse to continue, these do have to be redeveloped? I'm ju, I'm just worried about trying to get it. It says that they'll, they'll redevelop it, but I'm like, if it just failed.
We have, we have, we have four groups that have, have signed LOIs with us, the sports groups, volleyball, basketball, pickleball. uh, pickleball, um, so yeah, I, I mean, our hopes are, believe me, I would never go down the road and spend this much money on a building for a warehouse. Like, we would've, we would've gone a completely different direction, and Mike has put me through the freaking wringer on this thing.
That's great.
Ugh, not when you're on the side, it's not great.
Yeah, we can't force them to, to develop it.
Yeah.
But we, but we can prohibit them from turning that sports area into anything else until they come and go through this process. So technically, they could just do the fifty percent as the warehouse and continue on, and, and that is just, that would meet the agreement, and they could leave the sports section empty, um, but if they want to actually.
There'd be no motivation to do.
Do, right, exactly.
So, so that, that, I just wondered, the way it was worded, I wanted to, to clarify what that meant.
Yeah, that's fair.
So there's no, there's no, they have to do it, but they can't use that other half without.
Right, they can't change the purpose of that other.
Well, in which, and, you know, talking to Mike, I get why, you know, those uses wouldn't probably fit in to that area, you know? So, you know, it's probably, it limits us a little bit, but not really, 'cause at the same time, we're not gonna want those types of businesses in that kinda building anyway, you know?
I just have a question.
Yeah, the other, as I was reading that, um, and they would have to develop three storefronts, so there was, there is not an option if there was a big storefront that came in, I guess we don't want that, is what we're saying. I, 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 I don't know how that, I'm, I'm trying to even think.
Sporting Goods or Big House.
Dick Sporting Goods wanted to be next to the warehouse or something.
I, I think it gives us an option on that, right? Like, if we had a big group like that, then maybe it would make, maybe it would make sense, you know?
And we can always come back and renegotiate the development agreement. If there's something that comes in here that we really like and it's not even related, or it's a, a use that's not even allowed by the development agreement, but if everybody comes in on the same page and says, yeah, this would be great for that area, uh, we can always renegotiate a development agreement.
Okay.
So.
Just, just some clarification, thanks you. Does anybody else have any questions on that?
Just, my only question is, um, I guess you have reviewed all of this and your legal counsel or whoever, and, and you're in agreement with this development agreement?
Um, look, uh, how should I say this? It's not ideal, to be, to be frank with you, it's not ideal, but, I mean, I, I get some of the asks based on the area and what we're trying to do and, you know, I've been, this has been kinda like something I've been working on for a couple of years now.
That's great.
So I'm super excited about it. If I have to jump through a couple hoops in order to get there, then I guess it is what it is, you know, within reason. Um, but we have, we have big hopes and that it, that it goes, you know, kinda as planned, but.
What are, what are some of the things that you would.
But, but we are, Sharon, to answer your question, we are putting ourselves out there a bit, you know?
Sure.
For sure, you know? There's not, this isn't like a bulletproof, like, hundred percent win, no matter what for us, you know?
Yeah. No, I just, I just wondered if you had, um.
Yeah, we've combed through, we've combed through it quite a bit.
Combed through it and you're, and, and you are in agreement with it then?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that was my.
Yeah.
Question.
How, can you just tell me, how, let's say we got half warehouse and half sports facility. Are you, how are you gonna manage that? I, we've seen them proposed to us where it's, you know, all, you just come and you key a pad and go in and use it. Or are you gonna have that, or are you gonna have that on staff?
We'll have, that's a great question. We're gonna actually have the warehouse people enter from the backside of the building.
So they have a separate. There'll be someone there to greet the sports people?
All for the sports facility, yeah, we'll have full-time.
Have an office and.
Yeah, we'll have full-time people, kinda like what you've experienced, like walking into the rec center.
Okay.
You know, something like that. Yeah, we have to, you gotta have someone kinda keeping tabs on everything.
You schedule it online and they give you a code and.
Well, the good thing is for us, as we bring groups in, so those groups, we're gonna, they're gonna manage their, I guess their, their space in the, in the building tightly. Um, so, you know, the basketball group that they'll be given certain hours and courts assigned to them, and volleyball, pickleball, certain hours, things like that, so, um, I really feel like we have a, a great team of people, that this is just what they do and what they've done in the past. In fact, the guy that's gonna come over and run the day-to-day, um, I don't know if you guys have ever seen the Norton Facility up in Highland? It's just a one-court small, it's, uh, do you know where that's at? Just, just north of, uh, Lone Peak High School. It's called Nor- Norton Athletics.
Mm-hmm.
So he's, he's coming over to run this, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, I think it sounds really exciting. I, I.
Like I said, why you shouldn't got all your kids and grandkids showing up, and then that'll help.
Um.
Okay, are we ready for?
I don't think I have other questions.
Mike, can you continue with that?
I'm just gonna go over the last three bullet points of the development agreement, um, that you've gotta have that. So, so you gotta have the hundred feet, um, frontage along seven hundred north and, um, has to be subdivided as a flag lot, has to be used for parking and access, you know? We don't want by chance something small, you know, so, some small little building being put out there. Um, then, the Zone Map Amendment is conditioned upon the applicant applying to subdivide the property. Approval, approval of the subdivision by Linden City and the subdivision plat being recorded with U. Doc. County Recorder's Office within one year from the date of, uh, the Linden City Council approving the zoning map amendment. And so, so we don't want this hanging out there forever, and so this gives them a one-year timeframe. In the event that they don't go through with the subdivision, um, then the, then the property re- will revert back to the Linden Village Zone. And then, uh, the last bullet point is pedestrian access, and so, um, because this building.
Mike, is that one year to complete or one year to start? What is that?
One year just to do the subdivision and record the plat. And then, because this building sits back here so far, we have a trail along the, the property, um, so some type of pedestrian connection back to the building, whether that's just crosswalks that go from, or sidewalk that goes all the way across or something, but some type of pedestrian connection back to the building, so, so.
On that flag lot, I mean, I realize we were, we're telling them they need that hundred foot frontage, that flag lot. Are, are we concerned at all that that may prohibit larger restaurant or something else going there? 'Cause what's gonna go there? I mean, it's hundred, it's like basically a hundred foot wide driveway that we're saying we need into this complex. That seems a little excessive, but. I, I, I know we're trying to comply with, with, we, with the ordinance.
And they don't even have, their, their main access is actually on this property here.
Okay.
And so, this, this needs to be some type of parking or, you know, driveway access for that other building or something.
So, yeah.
So, but, yeah, so we.
But the hundred feet could be, like we said, could, that could be parking stalls on both sides.
Could be.
At a hundred feet.
Yes.
Okay, I, so I just wanna make sure we don't.
Right.
Limit what, what retail space can go there because we got this hundred foot wide buffer that we can't touch.
Yeah, so that could be parking for another restaurant or.
Okay.
So they just need some type of cross-access easement on their plat.
Okay. If, if they came back and wanted to increase the size of one of those pad sites, do we have the flexibility of doing that?
Yeah, these pad sites are just thrown, thrown on here, that, they, they could be, you know, totally different than what we see.
Could be bigger, they'll meet the parking ratios and things.
And right, those pad sites aren't part of the agreement, 'cause they're still just Linden Village zoned property.
Property.
And so, I don't even know if we have those taken off of this plan, or?
I think it looks pretty with it on there.
It, it, it does, I just don't wanna confuse somebody in the future.
Right, I mean, 'cause we're not getting a promise that there's gonna be retail there right now, right? We're just getting a promise that it's gonna stay Linden Village zoned.
Commercial.
I mean, it makes sense to put something like that there with the property, but, um.
We plan to take advantage of the traffic for sure.
Well, the concern I have is if you go forward with this and then you wanted to put, you know, that's a forty-two hundred square foot retail pad site. Let's say you wanted to do a fifty-six hundred square foot pad site. Are you gonna be okay with parking ratios and things, you think?
I, I haven't calculated parking as a whole on here. I think they have more than necessary, as long as they share their parking.
Alright.
So will you own the entire parcel all the way out to the street?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not just parcel.
Yeah.
That's one thing I do like about this is, I've, I've been to so many of these sports facilities and there's never enough parking.
Yeah.
And, and so people are parking half one, ha- half a mile down the street and carrying their lawn chairs up and.
Neighborhoods and everything else.
So, um, when you're ready, we've, we've prepared three motions, uh, for you, uh, each one. So what I would do on the agenda is go to each item, uh, um, if you want to add the AC rooftop unit requirement, then, then add that to your, your motion under the development agreement.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions for staff from the commission?
I, I, not for staff, no.
Or, and I was gonna say, um, we do have one member of the public here. We conducted our public hearing last time, so we don't need to have a public hearing, but is there anything that anybody wants to address?
Okay.
We've given that opportunity then. Okay, and then, so, uh, questions for the applicant or any other questions from the commission?
None here.
What, as far as in your mind or plans and with your partners, when are you planning to start? I mean, I know you have to plan, bring in site plans, everything else to us.
Um, so we're trying to, that's a great question. Um, we're trying to get going sooner than later, 'cause we, we need to get finished. Uh, it's, there's kinda like a buffer of timeframe next summer for clubs and all that stuff to get going, and we'd like to be done by then.
Okay.
So.
So.
So there's, I mean, we, we still have a lot of work to do for sure to get that prepared, but, um, like, we're already talking to builders, we're, you know, we're, we're down the road a little bit on all that stuff.
I'm just wondering when kind, you know, just generally, we would see a site plan put together?
Yeah, I'm.
'Cause it wa- it will come, now, where we review site plans, but anything on the commercial, I mean, on the Linden commercial also goes to the city council? No, no.
At, at this point, right, we would review it, but would be, our document would be the development agreement that would be comparing it to.
But the site plan itself.
Will only come to us.
Yes, and, and the layout on the site, like, like the landscaping, parking, all that, that, that still may change from this plan because, um, we have to, you know, there may be a few tweaks to it still.
So the city council would go through all of the, um, zoning changes and all those kinds of things and the, you know, the, um, you know, all, you know, all the motions we're making this, this evening, they would re- they would review those things.
That's correct.
So this presentation, all of those things. But then when the site plan comes back, it would only come to us.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
We, we, we used to have in our code, we changed that, oh, six or eight months ago.
Right.
That the council could call something up.
Right.
Um, and that's, that's not in our code any longer, we're just very, you know, more outlining what each, due, the planning commission duties are and the city council duties, and so, we don't have that in there any longer.
Okay.
Any other questions? And if there's not questions, is there any discussion about building materials? Whether we're happy with, with it as presented in the, in the exhibit, 'cause that's what we'd be approving, um.
Is there, is there anybody else other than Rob and I who've, who've, um, met, discussed the AC? Is that something that's important to everybody as well?
It's important to me.
Okay.
I, I think they should be hidden. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if we could, that's what you say, not on the roof, but just that they're not visible.
Well, eighty-eight thousand square feet, you've got some mer- fairly substantial equipment, mechanical equipment.
Yeah, you do.
If you put that on the roof, it's gonna be like another building. Uh, it's big.
Right, and so.
And so.
I've seen some answers you're gonna have, I mean, we, uh, we definitely will not make it visible.
Ground level, if you mount them in ground level and skirt them or something, you could come up with it.
Right, so.
And that will come to us with the site plan anyway.
If, if they're, um, on the ground, but if they're on, so, so if, if we are concerned about that, I would probably just put in the development agreement that they're screened somehow or that they're.
Hidden.
Hidden, you know, which I think they want to do anyway, but if we're concerned with that.
I wouldn't have a better answer for you on that, I just, I'm not a builder.
Can staff just add that into the, the development agreement before it goes to the council, or what do we do?
As we make the motion, we can say, we ask staff to add that.
Yep.
Okay.
On that part. So I, I kinda took notes that there are kinda three issues that came up. I don't think they're big ones, but just that we're okay before we vote. One is that it's an all-metal building, which is an exception which we are allowed to make, and I haven't heard a lot of objection to that, so, I think. And that, um, we are probably at fifty percent penetration on the building versus the sixty.
Sixty.
And that's also something that we are allowed to make an exception for. So, least to me, those were the three things that were discussed. I think we're good with it, but if anybody else wants to have a differing opinion or comments on any of those issues? Okay.
I just think those are decisions we, we can make because of the change to the mixed commercial zoning status.
And, and I agree, it's the best-looking sports complex I've ever seen around, you know, I mean, I think it's a, for, for a sports complex.
Yeah.
And if, if that's what we want there, that's, that's.
I think it's a great addition. I think it'll be formed as, as a catalyst to redeveloping everything, the restaurants, hotel. It'll really be, be a catalyst. I'm, I'm excited about it.
The only other question I, that's kind of a, does this have any impact on anybody as far as, are the city's general view of what the area should be like as far as a walkable community or a, a small shop downtown area? It's, that's just another consideration to think about as we move forward, as we start to develop this. This will bring, I think, a great set of additions with it, but they might not be that, that view. And I, I'm not saying I'm opposed or for either one, but have we considered that?
The walkable area though is more across the street in that deep area, I think is what was planned, wasn't it?
Yeah, more the Linden Village. Linden Village, you know, is, is more that way, so.
I don't see this as a negative.
This is on the north side.
So as this develops, I think there'll be more and more like this, and there's a chance that this will, um, maybe hinder that feel in the future, but I'm not, I, I don't feel it's a, it's a negative, but.
It's gonna be a thumbs up, it, it'll help bring other things into the area, once things are started.
And, and we do have to consider the location that, you know, it's, it, we're using it as a shield. That doesn't mean we're gonna do the same thing all the way down, so.
And also, this is the only property we're rezoning to mixed commercial.
Correct.
So any other properties would be commercial and they would have to, um.
Meet those standards.
Adhere to the Linden Village commercial architectural guidelines and commercial standards, so.
Right.
I think that's the protection on it.
And I think this will bring, hopefully will bring some of those hotels, which are larger, big buildings, and I'm just saying that, that, that's where it's gonna move. Not opposed to it, just throwing out that that's.
Right, yeah.
A motion that might be put in place.
I'll never throw out there that we did this. You know, and the others will be on the standard of Linden Village Commercial.
Yeah, I can't see us making other exceptions and changing those to mixed commercial. Can't see us doing that.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for, um, someone to make a motion for item number four, and once that's done, then we'll move through the others.
Well.
Which is, item number four is for the General Plan, uh, Future Land Use Map Amendment.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to recommend approval of Ordinance twenty, twenty-four oh nine zero to amend the Linden City General Plan Future Land Use Map for a commercial gateway to mixed commercial for a portion of parcel fourteen oh five oh 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 five one. As indicated in the adopting ordinance with the following conditions, Linden City General Plan Future Land Use Map Amendment is conditioned upon the applicant submitting and receiving subdivision approval within one year of the date of final approval from the Linden City Council in all items of the staff report.
I'll sec- I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The voting is unanimous. Let's move on to item number five. Uh, this is a zoning map amendment, and as noted before, we've already held the public hearing for this. Um, and we've considered it. Any other discussion by the, uh, commission before we?
We, we did close the public hearing last time, didn't we?
We did.
We did, yeah. We did, and we have the open, we have the option to reopen it this time, but we, we don't need it, so. Just stating that we've met those requirements for the minutes. And asking if, uh, the commission has any other questions, or are we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, is this a zone map, zoning map amendment? Okay, I'm, I move to recommend approval, denial, or continue of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten dash zero.
So you need to go back and say, do you recommend approval or deny? Which one are you gonna do? You read all three in the middle.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. Zone map amendment. I'm used to being there and instead of making motions.
Are you moving to approve?
I, I move to recommend approval.
Okay.
Of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash ten dash zero to amend Linden City zoning map from Linden Ci- Linden Village commercial, LVC, to mixed commercial, MC, for a portion of parcel fourteen zero five zero, zero zero five one, as indicated in the adopting ordinance with the following conditions. One, the Linden City zoning map amendment is conditioned upon the applicant submitting and receiving subdivision approval within one year from the date of the final approval from the Linden City Council. Two, the Linden City zoning map amendment is conditioned upon the developer entering into a development agreement with Linden City. That will set forth the development and design requirements for the developing in the mixed commercial MC zone. And, three, all items of the staff report.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We are now on item number six. Um, this is the, uh, now, maybe we need to open a public hearing because we did not have a development agreement last time. Brian, do you think we probably should just?
No, no, the, the, the public hearing is the requirement for the, the zone change recommendation and everything. And we conditioned it on that, um, I don't think we need to.
It just, it just noted as a public meeting for this, so I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to.
That was included in that public meeting.
As noted before, we've already held the public hearing for this, this item, so, um, if there's no other comments or questions by the commissions, I call for a, a motion on item number six, which is the, uh, the development agreement.
I may make a motion. I, I, I move to recommend approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty dash R to adopt the development agreement between Linden City and Jason Brown with the following conditions, there'll be an insertion of language referencing HVAC equipment. Um, preferably not being on top of any of the buildings. If, if, if they are, they will be properly screened so they're not visible from any street. And all, or any items of the staff report.
Can I, sorry, before we approve that, Jason, is, do you want your name on that, or is that, do you have a corporation that you're?
That's all.
Okay. I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, all three motions carry, carried unanimously, so, good luck in front of the city council with this. And I think it's, it looks like a great addition to the city.
Yeah, I hope so. Appreciate you guys.
So, thank you for working with staff, and staff, thank you for working with them to get this worked out.
Then we'll just go to city council.
We're, you're off the hot seat, tell, tell the city council, so.
Okay, thanks guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excited about what you're doing.
Thanks. Do you know any houses that went to Long High School?
Oh, I knew all of them, they were all my kids, probably.
All our kids.
Huh?
Heather?
Oh, Heather's my aunt, my niece.
Your niece, okay, yeah, I went to high school with Heather.
Doctor. She's a doctor now.
Is she?
Yeah.
She was always smart.
She is smart.
She wanted to help me about more a couple times there.
Well, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you guys, thank you. Is there any? So, what's the next?
Uh, we'll go to city council.
City council, yeah, I'll be interested in how they.
That'd be nice to get something going there.
Oh, that, I think it will motivate other.
Yeah. Let's do that.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks guys.
Thanks for coming in.
So we'll move on to item number seven on our agenda, which is, uh, planning director report and, uh, reports from the commissioners.
So. The only thing I have, let me pull it up here. So going down that rezone we did last time with the, the two properties here, where they were subdividing and rezoning the back halves of those properties.
Is that the one on Geneva Road?
Uh, the, yeah, this is Geneva, these are the two residential properties right here.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
So we rezoned those to mixed commercial because that's what the general plan had it as. Cause the general plan has this whole area, this, um, along the east side of Geneva Road as mixed, mixed commercial. But all the properties are mostly zoned light industrial. Well, there's a couple things, builders first source, they're under contract to buy those, but they want it zoned light industrial. And one other issue we've come into is, if we, if they buy it, um, and we do a subdivision here, then we're going to have this mixed commercial zone and you're gonna have two zoning districts on the same property, and you can't have two zoning districts on the same property. So, the homeowners are, wanna, wanna come back for a reconsideration. We'll notice it as a public hearing, but they wanna come back as a reconsideration to ja- change the general plan to light industrial and change the zoning to light industrial. So that'll come to you July fifteenth.
So with that. But the general plan would still have mixed commercial.
All around it.
All around it, right? So would that be something then at a future date, we'd probably wanna change the general plan back?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, it just, it's, it's this island that we're creating one way or the other.
Well, the way you need a. Builders first source wanna do with it, do you have any idea?
They're just, they're gonna move their, their, their solid wall fence over here and just use it as yard space. And the mixed commercial zone allows that, but they can't have two different zones on one property. And the mixed commercial zone requires frontage on a public street.
So, so you're saying they have to assemble them because of the frontage requirement?
Yes.
They can't just leave it as a.
What?
No.
What about an easement or?
Yeah, or what if, what if we rezoned all their yard over there in the mixed commercial to meet the general plan?
Yeah, they don't, they, I brought that up, but they.
That's what it'll eventually be.
Right, that's, yeah, that would solve the eventual problem, is to give them frontage that way.
Let me run Jared's idea by Brian, if, if a hundred feet of easement would work. I hadn't thought about that, and so, let, let me run that.
Is that, yeah, it is, yeah. Hundred foot easement from Geneva back?
Yeah. Cause that would give, might give them their frontage, let me, let me run that by them, I hadn't thought about that, so.
Yeah, just, just so we don't create this.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll create an island.
Still might be, but we'll, let me run, I had thought about that, so. So, and then in, for July, we just have one meeting, July and August, we always just have one meeting those months, so. July fifteenth, and I don't know the August one, let's see.
Now you, did you switch that from the night?
Second week of August, isn't it?
Ninth is city council.
Oh.
Nope, sorry, yeah, I messed up, sorry, the ninth is planning commission, fifteenth is city council, I'll have. That's, I told them the fifteenth, I believe, well, maybe I said the ninth, I don't know, I'll fix it, whatever I did.
The ninth is?
Ninth is planning commission, fifteenth is city council.
And I won't be here, you were gonna make sure you had a, there were several others that weren't sure.
Due to a family reunion.
Okay.
I will be returning on the eighth, I should.
Okay.
Barring travel, I mean, it's a busy travel time.
Karen, when she talked to me, she didn't feel like she would be here.
Okay, so we'll have maybe four. I'll, I'll double check with everybody.
So you need to get it a certain time, you can't move it to like the twenty-third?
I'm gonna be out of town on the twenty-third. I mean, we could do the sixteenth, possibly.
You should tell us where you're going. Sounds fun.
I think I did, but, but the last meeting, but, um. Yeah, cause it, I tried to do, I tried to do the ninth, I tried to do a meeting before city council in case anything is before you for a recommendation, uh, just to be, uh, quick on that, but. Let, let me see, why don't I send out an email, um, later this week and you guys tell me if you're gonna be here? I'll look on that item, um, with easement, we may have one more building as well. Um, uh, what's the name of the block company?
IMS.
IMS Masonry is building a new headquarter building, and so, that, that'll be on your agenda as well too, so.
Just for, I will be gone the twenty-third, so if you move it to the twenty-third, I will be gone.
Okay.
Now we're, we'll be leaving the twenty-fourth.
Hopefully we've got four of you here on the ninth.
Yeah, yeah, as long as you've got four.
Okay, I'll confirm that with you though.
All the ones that have no life, right?
So that, that's all I had, if you have anything for me?
Anything from any of the commissioners?
Just thanks for eroding.
Yeah.
Thanks for being able to get into our homes. You did good.
Yeah.
Did you have something, Jared?
I'll pass that on to Juan and Noah.
Local Linden real estate, there was an interesting home that maybe you know, about three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars across from the Clyde's property, that came on the market today.
A Dorothy's home.
Dorothy Sizer?
Yeah.
It's a little yellow-sided house on the north side of four hundred.
Basically, you're buying a building off.
Yeah, you're built, I mean. It's.
Yeah, it, the house is pretty rough, three fifty-five.
Three fifty-five for?
A half acre lot? Acre, I don't think.
No.
Quarter acre, it's.
Three fifty-five for quarter acre?
Just, just right next to Todd Carson.
Five hundred thousand for.
Right across from my old office, from my office.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, right over there. Kind of across from where the new fence development, you know, the block wall.
Jim Clyde's property, across from where the water main broke the other day, or, you know, all that fun stuff.
There's another home owned by a prominent member of our community, it's on the market as well for two point five million dollars. That's interesting as well.
Who's, who's is that?
Low-income housing, huh?
No, it's Eric.
It's what?
Eric.
Daughter's house.
Oh, it's on the market though? Oh gee.
So.
So I think that's interesting.
Well, I wondered, maybe we oughta close the meeting and then.
Is there any other, other things to bring up or questions? Okay, if not, um, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The meeting's closed.
So, I had, uh.